To order at 7:05. We are in the process of approving the payrolls and the payroll warrants. And we'll move on to approving the minutes for the October 6th open session and the October 6th executive session.
Motion to approve those minutes?
Both sets?
Well, actually, was there one in here for the executive session?
Yes. October 6th.
Yep.
Is that your motion?
Yep.
All those are in?
Wait, wait, wait. Discussion?
Yep. Okay, sorry. Sorry.
I just wanted to ask if this was correct. I could not remember on page three of the regular minutes. Down at the very bottom, it says AYP was met in math, was not met in ELA. Is that true for the, for this last set of MCAS scores?
It said you didn't meet AYP and ELA.
Yeah? Because I thought maybe it was the year before that we didn't make AYP.
The year before didn't make AYP in math.
Okay.
This past year made AYP in math, and you have to do it twice in order for you to become identified. This past year, we did not make it in ELA.
Okay. Just checking.
Any other changes?
Nope.
If there's some sort of discussion, we'll call us to the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass it? Move on to communications submitted to the school committee. I believe we have a letter from the committee.
Yes.
Would you like to read the letter, please?
Sure. Dear Berlin School Committee members, after serious and careful consideration, I have decided to resign as a member of the Tohonto Regional Middle High School Committee as of December 1st, 2010. I will continue as a member of the Berlin School Committee. My daytime job requires a great deal of commitment, and I can no longer divide my time between my career and my position on a school committee that I feel has become ineffective in many ways. Therefore, I have chosen to resign. I know our school systems will continue to provide a great education to the children of our communities, and I thank the residents of Berlin for giving me this opportunity.
I guess I will regretfully accept it.
Thank you.
We appreciate everything you have done and all the things that you've brought to the table. And the Berlin Committee will work together to try to find a replacement for the regional committee. And thank you so much for everything you've done.
Thank you. It's been great working with you guys on the region.
Much appreciated. And much regretfully accepting. Do we have any other communications?
There's one from Carol Young. You want to address that?
I think you can address that as the personnel subcommittee level. That agenda item? Okay. Do we have any petitions and aud- petitions and audiences relating to items on the agenda?
Can you put that on?
Yep.
I'm very respectful, very respectful of that, that you take some time and think about reconsidering your resignation. I think you guys have the capacity of realizing some mistakes that have been made in the past, and I think there's a whole bunch of positive things that can be done ahead. And I really have a lot of optimism that all the stuff that has been happening for the last several months is going to come to fruition, and it's gonna, there's some good that's gonna come out of it. And I think that because of your history with the committee, I, I think you're very objective. I think you're a wonderful committee member, and I think taking you out of the mix right now leaves a hole for Berlin. And I, I think you've done a great job, and I just feel terrible that you don't see light at the end of the tunnel, because I know I do. I really do. I think just a couple of the small changes that have been made in the last meeting are wonderful, and I, and I see more positive changes being made in the future. And I think on both sides, I think the school committee is going to be a happier unit, and I think the administration is going to be a happier unit when, when all of these things are put into place. And I, I just wish you would reconsider.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, at this time, I, I'm going to stick with my letter, but I do hope, and I, and I think that really there is light at the end of the tunnel. For me, not right now at this point because of my commitment to work and the length of time that I'm sitting in meetings in the evenings, it's just become unbearable with my family life, work life, and our committee life. But I do appreciate your-
That's one of the best for them. That's one of the things that needs changing.
Well, I do thank you, though. I appreciate it. And she made me great cookies.
I think you're brachy.
Okay. And we'll move on to the business items and reports. Do we have a CPAC report, Jill?
Very short one. We have a special program coming up this month. Paula Peterillo is coming on Monday, November 15th to talk to us, it's open to the public, everyone, about curriculum in the elementary schools, and that will be at 7 o'clock at Tohonto on Monday, the 15th. And then we have a regular meeting coming up the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, the 20th Thursday, just a general business meeting.
Thank you. All right. We need to go over some meeting dates. I believe we changed our December meeting outside of the meeting. We did it by mail because we had some conflict.
Yes.
So I think we settled on December 9th?
9th?
Oh, it was the 13th.
Okay, 13th. Okay, no, that's fine. That's fine. No, I thought it could be 9th.
It was, I think it wasn't 9th.
Yes, because that was a Thursday. It would need to be a Monday.
Yeah.
Is that right?
That's correct.
Can you go with that, Chris?
The 13th, yep.
Correct. So the next school committee is going to be on September 13th.
Right.
I'm sorry. Let's just make it a little more confusing.
Brian, it's at Berlin, too.
And that's right. And it'll be at the Berlin Memorial School.
Oh.
Are we allowed to say a lot?
Sure. They know. I mean, they don't know, but the folks know.
Because we're going to have a presentation on-
On SmartBoys by the first grade.
We're going to get taught by first graders.
Really?
Make sure that you're smarter than a first grader.
And, and a tour, too, we were going to do?
A right indoor tour?
Indoor tour, right? 6:30?
Anything with it, yeah.
Oh, okay. And it's at 7?
That's, I believe, most of the agenda improving, I think it'll be open.
Yeah, that's the plan right now. If you want to reconsider that, we can talk about it, but right now, the plan is to start at 7.
Okay.
And then we have the topic of working session. I know that we had one, and a lot of changes that we've had at our regional meeting. I believe that probably a working session at the elementary level might be a little bit redundant. Is there any discussion on that?
Well, I don't know. I hadn't really thought about it, actually. I don't want to pass over it for now, and then discuss it again. We don't have time to think of what we need to do. Sure. We can just pass over for the moment, but not to forget about it.
Put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Right.
So do you want it on the agenda for next meeting or future meeting?
I'm fine with future meeting until we know what else we're doing. It's up to you, you know, you guys.
If it doesn't stay, like, either on the future agenda items, I think it just disappears.
Oh, no, definitely keep it, we'll put it on the future.
Okay. That's what I was asking, whether it was going to be on the next meeting or the future. Sounds like future.
Future.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. We have need to form a personnel subcommittee.
Yep. So completed negotiations, and we're about to start up again. And even though we don't have an initial date, we are working on the dates, but we wanted to make sure that we had a personnel subcommittee for the next round identified in case the date happened before the next meeting. So we do need a personnel subcommittee.
Now, in the past, it's been the full entire committee. This past time, I know I opted out because of, I was on a dog negotiation committee. Have we appointed one in the past? Or we just, do you have any idea? Have we?
I think last year, we did, did appoint Nikki and I because you chose to opt out.
Correct. Okay. So what is?
Even if it's, there's actually some, some new language on a subcommittee of the school committee, when it includes the entire committee.
Okay.
Which is kind of interesting. But if, if indeed you want all three people to participate, I think it still makes sense to establish yourselves as a personal subcommittee.
Okay. Even though we're a complete committee, okay. What are your thoughts?
I'd like to be involved.
Okay. Okay. I'm tempted to say, since the Tohonto committee is still in process-
Still.
Yeah, no problem. I think that if we could, maybe if you guys continue as the subcommittee, if that's okay?
Sure. I think if you change your mind, I think you could join us or appoint all three of us and change your mind and opt out.
Does that work?
Why not?
Yeah, if you appoint all three, and if two show up, you still have a quorum. So you could certainly continue to operate, yep.
I couldn't go to that one meeting.
Okay. And that's important to be consistent at those, to keep the information.
Right.
Okay. Do I need a motion for this?
I think you just appoint.
Okay. I appoint? Okay. And I guess I will appoint all three of us to the personnel committee for Berlin.
Okay.
And we will be working on some dates?
Yep.
Do you have any? As soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
Okay.
Do we want to talk about, do we, do we want to talk about dates to that?
Let me, let me work with Cheryl, and she can connect with everybody. We've already had a few dates, but let me get Cheryl to kind of connect with all people so we can get some available dates.
Okay. You do that, right? It probably would be a good thing to do by email.
Yep.
Okay. Discussion of tri-meeting agenda items. In light of our regional meeting, I'm not sure that, we need to spend a ton of time on this, but I want to open up for discussion and how you feel about it, what you're thinking.
Well, I had asked you to put this on the agenda quite a while ago because I felt that it was, I think it's an obvious change for the elementary schools, and that I think that the elementary school committee really needs to be on board with this.
Okay.
And when I'd asked you to put it on the agenda, I was prepared to suggest subjects that I'd be willing to discuss at a tri-meeting. Needless to say, I have changed my mind after last week's tri-meeting about having tri-meetings at all.
Okay.
In my opinion, the, the tri-meetings that we had this year did not go well. The decisions and discussion that should have happened at the Berlin Memorial School Committee meetings were avoided by having discussion with the six regional school committee members. And I think it's very confusing by having the six members make a decision for all three schools, that Dr. McDermott took his direction from the regional school committee for all three school committees, and that shouldn't happen. Several times this year, the Berlin School Committee did not have the opportunity to have discussion to determine what was best for our district. And regardless of the outcome, the elementary school committees are legally entitled to have decision, discussion and to make decisions for Berlin and the Boylston School District. And so therefore, and after last week's meeting, which I was truly disappointed in, I am not in favor of having any more tri-meetings.
Okay. I guess, um, did, did you vote positively at the regional meeting?
Most likely, I did.
Okay.
Did we vote?
I'm sorry?
I'm trying to think. Did we end up voting on that? The votes that we took, I don't think had to do with the tri-meetings.
Do you vote?
Well, the vote was to have the six people focus on all students across the schools.
Right. Which actually, I feel as though I already do that. I do, when I'm making a decision for the Berlin School Committee or the regional school committee, I am thinking about all students, and I don't care if they're in Berlin, Boylston, or Kenya, you know? I'm making what I think is the best call for all students.
Okay. Did you raise a?
Yeah. I, I have a question right now. I mean, going forward, will you appoint somebody to the tri-meeting? Right now, my, as of December 1st, I will be on at this level. So I don't know, I mean, how we handle that in the interim, too. So that's just something that we need to-
I believe at the next regional meeting, we-
Which I will need to-
Right. We were going to talk about what a tri-meeting looked like, is that correct? To a certain extent, I mean, I guess, you know, being that it's new, it's new territory that we're kind of going into, the philosophy is, I really would like to think of it as all of our students. And it is hard to make decisions without knowledge about all of those students. I understand that people have issues with retaining our own identity, our own personality, and I don't believe that that is any intention of any of us. And I, I mean, to be honest, I don't think you could do it, you know? I don't, if you wanted to do it, I don't think you could do it. So that's not the intention of a tri-meeting. I believe the intention is to make all six committee members more informed about what's going on collectively throughout the three schools. And when we took the vote, what was really important to me, that I do believe, and this is something else as a committee, I think I had someone suggest to me, the reason our, our agendas have gotten so detail-oriented is because we didn't have as much faith in our administration as we do now. So my hope is that these meetings don't get into running the school, like we kind of have tended to kind of fall back into. And that's why I said it's going to be a little bit of work for us, because this has been our method of operation. So not only do we need to learn to think a little more broadly, but also try to keep our noses out of the how-to. So when I voted, I voted, I'm willing to do the tri-meetings as long as we keep out of the how-to, because I think if we don't, the meetings will be days long instead of hours long. So do you want to propose to, to take a motion at this point in time, whether we want to continue having tri-meetings or continue on the regional committee? I guess I don't, with your statements, I don't know what you're proposing.
I make a motion that the Berlin School Committee not, not participate in the tri-meetings that have been proposed.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on it?
I have to have a second.
Okay, second. I have a question. What, what, can we get a list of things? Because I'm not an educator, I'm not in the schools. What would, I mean, I'd like to look at what we're proposing that would be in a tri-meeting, a list of, in a tri-meeting, we would do this, in a tri-meeting, we would do that, in a tri-meeting.
I think, I think the proposal is we would do everything to a certain degree.
Let me, let me-
That's what's confusing to me.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me attempt to provide some, maybe information or rationale. It's a little odd. It seems a little odd. So when I first came on board, one of the things that we tried to do, not very often, but enough, was to bring together the three committees when we were talking about the same things. For example, we were about to start the budget process for a particular year, and there was information from the state that we wanted to make sure everybody heard at the same time, rather than having three separate meetings, that we would have to repeat the same information every single time. And so if it turns out that even with the same information, each committee had to then, because you still have the legal responsibility for your committee, even if each of the committees had to take a vote at that point, we wouldn't have to go through that process three separate times, in three different places, three different dates. So we were trying to have a tri-meeting so all three could hear at the same time, think about it, collectively think about how that impacts all students, and then still take on the responsibility of being able to vote for, at, with your specific committee at that one meeting. So it seems to me that the attempt to do a tri-meeting is really more about efficiency and having everybody collectively think about the same things at the same time, and then if you have to take a vote individually, then that's fine. You're set up to do that. That's really, in a, in a very simple way, that's the intent of the tri-meetings. But, but my understanding of the vote that was taken last week was really not necessarily about tri-meetings.
That's what I didn't-
It was really about six people taking on the responsibility for all students in the Berlin, Boylston Public Schools, which means Berlin Memorial, Boylston Elementary, and Tohonto. And any, from my perspective, anything that happens in any one of those schools impacts the students in all the other schools. And so collectively, when the six of you think about that, and think about how we want the school system, including all three to move fo-, including all three schools to move forward, it makes more sense to collectively talk about that. That's what the vote was about, which is different than a tri-meeting.
That's what I-
But the tri-meeting is really about efficiency, and it certainly makes sense, the six people thinking about issues at the same time, but still individually having to vote, then it's set up to do that. So I don't know why that's an issue, to be honest with you. Why that, why it's a problem to have the three meetings, the three committees together.
I'd like to hear from the other members.
I mean, I think it will be a challenge to a certain extent, because we have been doing this forever, this way. I definitely think that I'm all for efficiency. I think that I can make a better decision if I have more information, but I don't want so much information that it's, you know, I don't want to be spinning around talking about things that we really don't need to be talking about. So that, that's my, a little bit of my concern.
You know what?
It's a learning process for me.
In, in every one of the tri-meetings, there was always an opportunity for any member to say, not prepared to do this, I'd rather take this back to our individual school committee meeting, and talk about that. I, I have yet to remember somebody actually making that motion or taking that action. So if that's been the case, and people haven't been comfortable doing that, then that's important. We should make sure that that's very clear. If any one member of a committee wants to do that, by all means, make the motion, not ready to vote on this, we'd rather take this back to our own committee meeting and, and take that action. You have the right to do that. So-
And that's kind of what I'm suggesting, is that we do that.
But it also sounds like you're suggesting no tri-meetings at all.
I, I have lost faith in several of the members of the regional school committee because of last week's meeting. I don't trust that, I mean, that was a scam, as far as I'm concerned. It wasn't a school committee meeting, it was a public forum. A school committee operates under the guiding principle, or the, what's it called? The thing on the back of the agenda. Guidelines for public comment. That was not, that was not followed. The discussion is between the members of the committee, not a discussion with the superintendent, not a discussion with the audience. The discussion is at the school committee level. There's a time for the superintendent to speak, there's a time for the audience to speak. That was not done. And frankly, I, I voted just to get out of that meeting. I did not feel as though I could speak and share a differing opinion, because there doesn't seem to be a lot of tolerance for any kind of differing opinion from the regional school committee members sometimes, superintendent. I, I cannot feel, I cannot feel as though I can share a differing opinion, which may actually enlighten some of, some of you. And give it some thought. This Berlin School Committee lost some of its authority this year, in my opinion. As far as budget, I was prepared to have a discussion with the Berlin School Committee on budget, and it didn't happen. And I was prepared to discuss teacher negotiations as a school committee, and when I shared a differing opinion, well, I kept pointing to the regional school committee, already said this, it doesn't matter, the regional school committee is a separate district. And that's the way, I, I want to respect the districts the way they are. I think that our community members deserve that. And maybe if some of the members of the regional school committee had been a little bit more respectful of the fact that we are three different districts, then maybe I wouldn't be sitting here saying this tonight, and maybe I would consider myself being prepared to discuss having tri-meeting subjects. But I'm not. There's a reason why it's been done this way for so long. It's not necessarily because it's, you know, it's just the way we've been doing it. It's, it has worked. It's, I mean, even changing the schedule so that Berlin now is first Wednesday, second Wednesday is the region. The reason the region was always first is because some of the discussion would usually happen at the region, and there generally was the same people on the region as Berlin. And then next week was the Berlin meeting, so that if there was action to be taken after the discussion at the region, then that was, that was just the way the schedule was, and then Boylston was the third week, or, or the fourth week, you know, and Tohonto, or the, or the region had another meeting if needed. That's the way it, it worked. And then you felt as though that the Berlin School Committee and the Boylston School Committee had their own autonomy. Boylston even went to having their own separate meetings, because they didn't want to be rushed and have an hour before the region. There was a reading, reason for some of these things. It's not just saying, well, that's the way it's always been. It worked. And I think you need to be, I think some people around here need to be a little bit more respectful of that fact.
Respectful of the fact that it did work?
No. Respectful of the fact that we do have, we need to have our own autonomy at this point in time, because we are separate districts. We don't check with Clinton to make sure that Clinton is aligned with Berlin or the region. Clinton's a separate district. They're not going to want to have a tri-meeting with Northborough and Berlin, Boylston. They have their own autonomy. And this year, I did not feel as though we did have that. And so therefore, I don't have enough faith that with the members that we have right now, we can do this.
Well, I do think that we've been charged by the NEASC to unify our curriculum.
And that's why-
Not with Clinton, but with Boylston.
Previously, previously, we did have, the region was first Wednesday, Berlin was second, and Boylston was either the third or fourth, and that's why the superintendent is required to, you know, bring certain things to all three school committees.
Well, I believe that in, in the possibility of efficiency, this is just another idea, another way to do it.
Mm-hmm. And- It should have come probably, most likely, it should have come to the elementary school committees first. And maybe I have a part in apologizing for that, because I was the chair at the region last year when we started doing these, these tri-meetings. And I didn't stop to think that, you know, this would be a really big change for the elementary school committees, and we should have addressed it at an elementary school committee meeting. And I think Boylston should, too.
Mr. Werner?
Yeah. I'd like to ask a question. But could, would you give us some examples of what types of topics would, would be, you would need to cover at the elementary first?
Well, you are addressing the chair, according to the guiding, the public comment.
So what topics would you feel would be necessary to address at the elementary level first?
I don't really, I mean, I, I don't know. It would be usually- I don't really, I mean, I, I don't know, it would be, usually, the region would go first. And usually, because a lot of discussion, a lot more discussion, I believe, happens at the region. And then it would come, now, this is like back another year, when we had the different arrangement of meetings.
Right.
So that Berlin would be the second Wednesday of the month. I mean, it doesn't really matter, but, you know, generally, different new topics come to, it's easier if it comes to the region. I mean, I think that's obvious, because you've got generally the same people. So, you get a lot of discussion at the region for, say, policy, and then the second, then the next elementary school committee would have a chance to say, "I completely agree", vote the policy, and, or maybe even refine it, because it doesn't quite fit your elementary school district.
And how could that not be accomplished if we did it all in one night?
Well, I suppose if I had a little bit more trust in the members of the regional school committee, that I would, I would attempt to look through some of the different subjects and say, "This is what I would say we, we, we address."
So, maybe the issue here is we need to do some team building, or some.
We definitely are not a team, so, yes, that might be helpful.
Relationship building something, because I don't think that the efficiency is going to be any better if we continue doing it the way we are. If we do it by a try meeting, we will definitely increase efficiency, but I do understand, I guess it's two different issues for me. One of it is a relationship with other board members. And I don't quite see how not having try meetings, except for avoiding the issue. If we can't work together as a committee on try meetings, how are we going to work together as a regional school committee by itself, the six of us?
There's an autonomy for the regional school committee, and there's an autonomy for Borl- Berlin, there's autonomy for Boylston, and we need to make sure that that stays intact at this point. We don't, we are not regionalized K through 12, and perhaps it's something we should look at again, but I think we did take a vote at the region to say that unanimously, we're not interested in doing that.
Okay. I would just respond to that, and I felt like we heard from the community, like, "Hey, we want to talk about that." And I believe, my personal opinion is, I was elected by the community of Berlin, heard a lot about, you know, "We're not really interested in regionalizing," but last Wednesday I heard, "Yeah, we are." So, just like the sixth grade, I'm not prepared to make that decision for the town of Berlin. We need to talk about it, we need to do, and, there's no.
Was it, the vote, was the vote, I don't know specifically the wording, but perhaps it was to spend time on investigating, perhaps it was plain old regionalization, I don't remember the language.
The one we voted no to?
At the region.
The one, at, at the working session, where we looked, it was, "Are you in favor of full regionalization right now?"
And we all voted no.
If we were to take another vote right now, I would have to say I am in favor, well, in favor of, because of our constituents, I would say I need to investigate that, I'm not prepared to make a decision.
I think we need to hear more about regionalization. I think it would be great if, and I don't want to give, just from my direction to Dr. McDermott, but I think it would be great to start looking at examples and saying, you know, "This town regionalized, this is, their scores went from here to here," or, "These were the benefits," because there's so many aspects to regionalization, and it always goes from try meeting to regionalization. And if, you know, in the community members, I think we need to hear from the community members, and I think we need to become more educated on what regionalization actually means, because I can't say, and I'm on the school committee, that I know from A to Z exactly what that means. And so, I think we need to hear more, and I think we need to educate the public on what that, and then let them make that decision.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think that the people who said they were interested in regionalization at the last, last week's meeting know perhaps as much as we do about the different aspects of it. We don't know all of it anyway, all of us. But perhaps it would be better to have Dr. McDermott bring us information on, "What are the advantages? What are the disadvantages?"
Same thing we did with the sixth grade.
Right. But.
It's not educated.
Sandra?
You have to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to remember that last week's meeting was solicited for people to come and show support for Dr. McDermott, and, and they did. You didn't have a cross-section of Berlin-Boylston, you had, you know, who Mr. Brenner decided to invite, and you weren't getting, and the other thing is that we, we, you didn't, you know, the, even the acknowledgements, I mean, the communications that were negative were not even addressed.
Well, I, I gotta tell you.
And, so, I'm just, what I'm trying to explain is just that you have to remember that you didn't hear from everybody last week, so that can't, you can't say that that, you know, makes you decision one way or the other, at least for me.
Oh, no, no.
That's, that's my point.
But it did open the door. I do want to say that the negative communications that we got, I will go on personally to say I am totally embarrassed by them. They are not professional. I'm just totally embarrassed that this, that this is the kind of communication that we're getting about a professional position.
But, but you do have to remain sort of, I mean, it is what it is. I'm maybe embarrassed also, but.
Can we discuss this a little with the?
Well, yeah, no.
Okay. Because nobody knows what we're talking about, and I don't think it's fair to just sit here.
I do apologize, but there was some, let's just say, some emotional communication regarding, and it did not get processed. I guess what I'm trying to say, though, it isn't constructive. No matter what it says, it isn't constructive, and that's, I'm all here for, to hear anything that anybody has that's constructive. So, it's hard for me to even take that into consideration when I'm making a decision about what I'm doing here. That's all. Sandra?
Did you hear last week that people were interested in regionalization, or hearing more that we want to be working together more? Because from what I've talked to people around town, especially in Berlin, I don't hear too many people that really want to regionalize.
Um, I mean, it very well could be, but I do believe that what came out was, "Let's, let's hear what it means." Let's, you know, "How can we do this better?" Um, I think that one thing that was really clear is, nobody really realized the rigmarole that we go through just to get through a try meeting even. I mean, even these try meetings, I mean, it sounds like a semi-solution, but you heard how ridiculous we sound when, "Okay, now you vote, okay, now you're doing," you know, it isn't efficient. So, I mean, that's a negative. Is it worth going to regionalization? I don't know. You know, that's something that, you guys get, I really, you know, it's going to be a town vote, it's not, the only thing that the school committee can vote to do, I believe, is to bring it forward.
I mean, nothing's efficient the first time you do it. It takes time, and it takes practice for something to be efficient.
Correct, correct, correct. And I think that, I think that everybody saw that we needed increased efficiency if the people at the table are going to be able to concentrate what we really want them to concentrate on, not the, you know, preparing all this paper and doing, you know, that's not really what I want them spending their time on. I mean, the government gives us enough paperwork, I don't think we need to add to it.
I think, though, also, we need to take baby steps in this process, because I think if we just start running full steam ahead, we are going to end up like where we are right now, today, with all of this acrimony.
Right.
And that's a problem, and then nobody works efficiently. So, I think we need to investigate, educate ourselves, and move forward slowly, and to start accomplishing baby steps, and then you can get to your goal, because rushing full steam ahead is not making anybody happy.
No, we need to learn how to do it. Learn how to do it.
And I, and I would agree with your, your aspect of thinking, that we also need to do some team building, because if we can't work together, this isn't going to work.
I agree. So, there's a part of it, it's like you can't work at a try meeting, well, that, that just kind of blows the regional meeting out of the water too, because we need to learn how to work together.
Could be.
I just have a couple comments. The try meeting is a meeting of three school committee meetings. How they work or don't work is entirely up to you. If you don't like the way the try meetings have worked in the past, change it. Make it work so that it works for all three. At least try. I guess I, I really take to heart, when I hear a motion being placed on the table by one of your members, that she doesn't want to try, because in the past, it didn't work. Well, when, in the past, if it didn't work, you don't throw it away, you change it until it does work. So, I'm saddened that I hear that from someone who has so much history and so much education to offer this.
I've tried, I have, I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, you didn't try to change it.
No, no, I'm just saying that I have tried, but it's not.
I'm trying to interpret, because you yelled at last minute.
I'm, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Um, so, my, my request would be, please, at least try. Decide how you want it to work, these are your meetings, they're not their meetings, they're your meetings. Decide what you want to discuss and what becomes minutia. And the other thing is, I know where I work, I have a lot of sub-meetings before I have my final meeting. It is absolutely, I know that I have a difference of opinion with Dr. McDermott, but it is absolutely fine if you want, the three of you want to meet as a school committee for Berlin to discuss more minute details, they don't have to be there. So, if you want to meet every night of the week, you can.
Thanks, Heidi.
I don't want to meet every night of the week.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, don't feel like those meetings, when you're all together, you don't have an opportunity to get into as much detail as you want, because you can. But they don't have to be there. You can get all of your discussion out, just the three of you, in an open meeting where people can come and whatever, and then when it comes time to the try meeting, you've had all that discussion, you know where your sticking points are, what's bothering you about this issue and what's not. So, that you won't get enough time doesn't make any sense in my head, because you can meet and get all those details sorted out, and if you have questions from those, then you, that's what you either email for an answer, or you bring it to the try meeting. But I, I, I just think, you guys, I was really optimistic when Chris made a comment at the try meeting, that, "Why don't you bring the NEASC in and get the six of you in a room..."
MAS.
Excuse me?
MAS.
MAS, I'm sorry, I'm getting them, I was mixed up.
Don't bring the MAS.
No, 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 no. Not, not again, we have five of yous, right? Don't do that. But bring the MAS in, and, and have someone who is, who is more objective to put you on the right track. This is what a school committee does. This is what a school committee doesn't do. But I think if you look internally, I think you're going to be able to make these try meetings work. Team building can be part of it if you want, but I really think that you need to get the six of you and, and kind of remind yourself, well, you can all pull out your books that you got on week one, and list exactly what the school committee's objectives are and what you're supposed to do. I mean, by your own admission, you don't have any goals, so it's very difficult to assign goals to someone who works for you when you don't have any yourself. So, I, I would do, I would, I would like Chris to remove her motion on the table, and maybe reword it to be that you would be willing to try to restructure your, your Berlin School Committee, so that you could attempt to participate in a, in a, a try meeting and have it be successful. Okay. Gentlemen, I'm sorry.
I'm John Walsh.
Hi, John.
Hi. I'd just like to make a few observations. I wanted to applaud the chair's comments earlier about trying to have some, some dialogue back and forth, because ultimately, in the end, I think a lot of this is somewhat less functional and, and more just some of the personality challenges and some of the, some of the traditional operational challenges. So, I just want to make a few comments. In the end of the eighties, early nineties, the business community came up with this term silo, and the key was to break down silos and help people work across, across different departments or functions, et cetera. And I see this group the same way we see business, you're running a business. And knowing that we have two streams of students from two separate districts, eventually funneling into a similar, a common education system, operating in silo is not only difficult for the, the kids in the, in the district that you're not directly interacting with, but it, it sets the children of your own district up potentially to be at a disadvantage, because they start at different places, whether it's above or below, or from different perspectives. And I think that, that what I heard earlier, is that we heard from the public last time, regionalization are not, not so much the issue, but the communication among the, the entire group of school committees is the key to, to getting this to, to resolve. And all of the, the, any potential barrier to having any type of communication will only make this fester. This will not get better unless the groups come together to work it out. And unfortunately, I, you know, I see the frustration at last meeting, I see the frustration tonight, that frustration will only grow unless somehow the groups get together and recognize the differences for the betterment of breaking down the silo. Without that, unfortunately, not only do you lose, but then the children of the districts on both sides lose. So, as challenging as it is for, for the members of the committee, and as painful as it might be on some issues, and, and I certainly don't know all of the minute issues, but the reality is, if that doesn't change, everyone loses. You lose because you come to another meeting that's frustrating. We, as the public, lose because we want to see you cooperate, and it's apparently challenging, and the kids lose. And ultimately, the only way to do that is to take that painful step to make that, make that communication effort.
Thank you.
I, I would just say that he is correct, that we do need to take a step in order to make us more functional at the region, and I believe the first step should be something where we learn to work together. I feel like there has been very little tolerance for any kind of a different opinion this year, and I have not felt free to share my opinions at meetings at the region.
Okay. Do you have any suggestions on how we might be able to accomplish that?
MAS, I believe, would be very helpful.
Okay. To come in and do a working session with us, or something?
And, and there, I mean, there's certain responsibilities of a school committee member, which MAS can help to, for some of us that maybe don't understand, you know, the obligation to being able to speak freely to make a decision for one community, one district or another. I don't think that people are aware of how difficult it is sometimes to speak up when you've got, you know, the majority of the members who don't want to listen. You should still be able to feel as though you can speak in the meeting and speak freely. I think people from Berlin know that my first priority is students and student achievement, and I have worked very hard for that, and I've even encouraged Boylston members at the region, when we had budget issues, that they should be fighting for their elementary school too, and not to pit Tohato against Boylston, because there's one pocket of money the money's coming from, and to pit one against the other. You need to fight for both of them, and get what you need for both schools, instead of trying to pit the school committee members against each other. You really do need to think about things on, as a whole. I feel I do that. I also feel as though I'm not in the minutia, I'm not micromanaging. I, I know what that is, and I've already said to many superintendents to please let me know if you feel I am. And I've tried very hard this year to discuss some of my differing opinions in, in how things have been run, but have been, you know, don't want to hear it. So, I've already tried some of those things, even though the public may not know that.
Mr. Brenner?
I've been hearing two, two things here, is one is that, Chris, you want everybody to do it your way, and if you don't, you're not going to say anything.
Sharing my opinion.
Well, you can share your opinion, I don't think anybody's going to overtalk you, I'm sure you can, they may not agree, you can still say it, but what I'm hearing is, they don't agree, and you're not comfortable with it. You're one of six, and I'm sure there's other people that have their own opinions, so that's something you have to get over, that even though you're a minority, you have to speak up, and you have to be okay with that.
That's right.
If they don't agree, you still have to get over it.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see that letting go, if you want to have your way, you're going to keep driving till, till you get your way. The other thing, to write off what happened last week has just special interest, speaking from, from his. from, from Mr. McDermott, I think that you're mis, really misreading why people were there. There was a few people who were there that said, Mr. McDermott, but really what people were saying is, you guys got to work together. You're not working together, the way you make your decisions is not together, we want you to work together. So to write that off as a sham or whatever you said is really not fair to the people who showed up, to the board members and what I think Ruth tried to do with the motion she made. So I think you're writing people off because you're not getting your agenda done. And I think that's a mistake and it's really what's causing some of the issue here. I'm, I'm sure that you can get to a place where everybody's working together, but right now, just the statements you're making right now are very divisive, making a lot of people uncomfortable.
Good stuff right there. I do think, Chris, that there is a way that I feel that we could definitely work about, work together better as a committee. I think we voted to talk about a meeting with M A S C, did we not? Was that not a, um, I thought so.
I forget if it was an actual vote, but it was certainly discussion.
I think it was discussed.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misspoke. I didn't really mean to vote, but we just kind of did. So, um, I guess I would respectfully ask you if, if having a meeting with the M A S C and when we get to the next regional committee meeting, if, I don't think it's appropriate for executive session, I don't. But we do have a conversation about respecting others and relationships and whatever else we need to talk about because the point I tried to make earlier, even if we don't do these try meetings and we have these issues, we're going to be dysfunctional as a regional committee. So we need to get past these issues somehow. So do you want to go ahead and take the vote on the try meeting motion that was made and Where would you like to take it from here? Because I think we all kind of are pretty comfortable with everybody knowing where we're at with this. How do you feel?
Where are we at?
Well, I think we need, I think, I really think the issue is not the try meeting, the issue is the relationships with the school committee and being able to work together.
You're absolutely correct.
Whether it's, whatever you want to call it.
Mm-hmm. I think we are dysfunctional as a regional school committee.
Okay. But I guess if we avoid the try meeting, I understand that maybe that pulls all the three schools into dysfunction, but maybe that gives us the opportunity to get rid of the dysfunction.
I think that should be the baby step that we're talking about where clearly Chris isn't comfortable speaking at some of these meetings.
Which needs to be addressed.
Which needs to be addressed. And I think that's one of the first steps is getting, getting to a level at least where you can communicate with one another because we haven't even gotten there yet. And I don't think try meetings, which I don't know now that I've resigned from the region, how much say and how that would work and if somebody coming in to replace and all of that would need to be worked out. And I'm happy to work with people on that. But I think that we need to start slow and have a certain comfort level there. And not saying no to try meetings forever, maybe saying, you know, let's bring it back in a month, let's bring it back in two months, let's update on the progress of how this committee is working together. And we should have, we should have goals of this committee to better our relationships and so that all members of the group feel comfortable.
I agree. So are you saying you want to take a vote on the try meeting?
Well, I can, I can adjust my, yeah, motion to say that I would make a motion that we not participate in try meetings until we're feeling at the point where we'd be more comfortable, where we're more aware of what it involves. Something to that effect.
Okay.
We could set a, a date for that though, so it's not an open-ended type, or just an update of where we're at too and say.
Let me just say my opinion. Before we, before we can work on it, we need to be together. Therefore, having a try meeting gets us together. So.
Well, the regional meeting gets us together.
Okay. But it doesn't bring the issue.
You're not operating as school committees who are responsible for all the students.
Right, until you like come together in your dysfunction, where you have it most apparent, how can we work on it? It's like working on it. I don't know.
Can I just, let me just read something. I don't know if this is the right time for this or not, but I've had it for the last few meetings. Let me just read it. Withdrawal from the Superintendency Union with Northboro and Southboro and entry into a new one with Boylston is both logical and desirable. It is of considerable importance that the educational program from first grade to high school graduation be carefully coordinated. Quite obviously, this can best be done when both elementary and secondary education are under the direction of the same superintendent of schools and school committee. Singular, not plural. This is from the 1960 Berlin Annual Report. There are a couple of the comments in here. It seems to me that the folks who first created this region and this union were actually interested in coordination across the schools. And so when you say respect the agreement, as I noted at the last meeting, and I had that pile of paper, I didn't expect us to get into that conversation tonight, lots of folks from the school committee side, from the school administration have described that it's not working well. And that in every one of those cases, it has not, nothing's been changed. And all the reading that I've done, the reason that it hasn't been changed is because people weren't comfortable with the political fallout of that. But in the arguments to look at it, to investigate it, to try to think about something different, the arguments to do that was always about students. And so we can take our time, which we absolutely should take, make sure that it's done well. But this is not the first time that this conversation has happened. It's happened every six, seven, eight years ever since the region was created. And in fact, the people who created this union and region talked about it being coordinated across all.
I think that the, go ahead.
So, the issue that I have and the reason that I've, I guess, been willing to push this is because from an operational perspective, it is broken. And we will continue to not do what we need to do for students if it remains this way. So I think one of the things that I was excited about with the meeting last week, in addition to having all those folks show up and witness the school committees in operation and hear how much inefficiency there is in the system, and to have the six of you actually vote to say, we want to pay attention to all the students in our school system and we want to see if we can do this better. That's how I walked away from the vote. Within an hour, the school committee was backpedaling on that vote. And so it didn't take long for folks to not really, to be really uncomfortable with what that meant, which was kind of encouraging and discouraging within an hour, is really kind of interesting. The thing that I was excited about is that the, that the six members actually thought about their responsibility for all students. The more we talk about the lines, the less we're going to talk about students. So I guess I'd ask you to consider that, think about whether or not you want to work all together.
Thank you.
I have a question for Brian. Are there things that you could come to us with though, right now, immediately, from the central office perspective and say, you know what, we want to do this and make it, I don't know, you talk, just for example, and I'm not sure what these things are because I don't work there, but.
I already have, I have a good set.
Okay, could you?
But my, my challenge has been to try to convince you folks that it's actually worthwhile talking about. So what I heard last week was that it's worthwhile. So at the next committee meeting, in addition to providing you a sample of an agenda that focused on policy and focused on, not on building specific.
Yep.
I will be providing you with, at the very least, not full K, pre, preschool, is that, is Allen here? No, I thought it was Grace. She said preschool, yes. Full pre-K to twelve. That's, that's a discussion that, that as a solution should be part of the discussion. Not necessarily the solution, but it certainly be, should be part of it. But the suggestions that I'm going to bring forward to the committee are not about that. They're about ways in which we can become more efficient. There's a long list of those.
I'd be interested in seeing those because I haven't seen them and I don't work there and I don't, I believe.
Yeah, but, but again, the, the first, before you get to see whether or not this will work or this will work, I got to have a commitment from the committee that they're actually interested in doing that. Because we continue to spin our wheels coming up with solutions when the six of you aren't really ready to take that step. I thought we finally took a step last week.
Well, you need, you need the commitment from the committees, I think. You have to recognize the fact that we're three committees.
Well, we, we were a try meeting at that meeting and we took three separate votes.
Yes.
I do recognize that fact, Chris.
Okay.
I do, I absolutely do. I, I have never and I won't ever ask any one committee to do anything that is not legally responsible for doing. My intent is to try to make our jobs focused on students. In the extent that we can bring the six of you together, which represent all three communities, committees, and we can talk about our students, that better off we're all going to be. I have never intended to do anything to disrespect the agreement.
I do think that some, in some ways, that that did happen last year. And it wasn't purposely, I don't think. But I think, I, I don't think that the members understand that, you know, we have, do have a right to certain discussion about certain things, for example, budget and negotiations. And I felt as though sometimes those meetings were, well, you know, we don't need that meeting because we've already had one at the region and everybody spoke. But we do need to have the discussion for certain things like budget or negotiations or any of, or policy. You need to be able to feel as though you do still have a say. And it didn't happen last year for me.
Stacy?
I, you know, I, I'm listening to, you know, this meeting and the last meeting and I understand that it is really difficult when you have a whole bunch of different people with different ideas, you know, to come together and, and get along and try to, so I understand that it's really hard. But, you know, as you, you guys are talking, you know, I'm thinking about how we try to teach our kids. You know, and we, we teach our kids when, you know, they're in, they're in school and they do all these group projects and we try, we teach them how to get along in groups. And, you know, for some children, it's very difficult to get along in groups, having a child who has difficulty getting along in groups. But, you know, we, we teach it, we teach them to, you know, continue plugging along, don't give up, you know? If it's not working, you need to come up with different ideas. And this is kind of the same thing, you know? And it's almost like everyone in, on the committees needs to be, to take that step and say, I'm willing to make it work no matter what, no matter what the personality issues are, no matter what the issues are, I'm willing to take that next step and figure out how to get along and how to make it more efficient. And I don't know if, if everybody agrees with that. Because if you, if you all don't agree to take that step, then it isn't going to go anywhere. I don't mean just you all, but all of you as, as committees. So I guess that's what I'm asking is, is, you know, is everybody willing to take those steps to work together?
I guess I, I do see it as the administration has come to us, all three school committees, and has said, this isn't working for us. Will you consider this? That's the question at hand. I am willing to consider that. I can only speak for myself. There's a motion on the table. We can vote on it. I think I need it reread to make sure I know what the motion is that's on the table.
Will the Berlin School Committee not take part in try meetings until the school committee members are more aware of what they involve?
Okay. Do we, do we have a second on that?
I seconded at the time, yes, I did. And, and I still think, I'm not against try meetings. I am, I do want to hear from Dr. McDermott and what we can do today. And maybe you don't give it to me today, but I do want to hear from you. And say, these are the things we can do to streamline things that are happening in triplicate in the office. I do. And so I want to hear from you on that. I do think we need to rebuild.
Can you hear from me on that at a try meeting?
Maybe for one month. But see, now, now, now we get into the other.
But that's, but that's the point. I mean, we really want to talk about how we can make things better across the systems.
I will hear that from you at a meeting in, in, up until December first then, at a region meeting. But I think that we need to take baby steps on this, I do. Smaller, slower steps because I think people are feeling like they're being rushed right into it. I think it's something to consider. I think we should be able to get there by maybe January, February, something, I mean, from what I'm seeing. But I don't know that we could get there today with everybody feeling comfortable and for it to be successful. Because I don't know if we start pushing people into things that will be successful. And clearly, there's a difference of opinion here. And I'm not going to be on these, I mean, I would hope that I would find a replacement for somebody for the region. And if you guys decide to go to try meetings, that's a whole different discussion on how we handle that, but that's how I feel. So I think right now, I would say, I would not vote for it at this point. I will consider it, I'll consider it in the, in the near future if I see progress being made with, and, and some of the things of what this actually means. Educate me on it.
On just the try meeting we're talking about?
Yes, I'm just talking about a try meeting. I want to know what, what things can we do as a, as a try meeting? And I think I've, I've asked that, so.
I mean, I think there's two things here. One is back to this philosophy thing and the other one is to the nitty gritty of how we do things. And I think what, I don't know who else to speak for anybody. So you're looking for both, is what you're looking for, right? Philosophy and procedure? I mean, I think what we're trying to say, what we're trying to say is, we think the philosophy is there and what you're saying, okay, back it up with the procedure. Isn't that what you're saying?
I don't think so. I'm not sure. I understand that.
We're basically saying, yes, we want to take care of 1,100 students, but guess what? We don't really want to do it in a meeting.
Right.
Because we don't want to do it the way we want to do our meetings. So what you're asking.
I guess I'm, I'm a little confused with the, with, with the issue of the try meeting as.
The sticking point?
As an obstacle. I mean, for any one, for any meeting, anytime we've had a try meeting, I've always come to you before, prior and said, we would like to have a try meeting. Nobody has ever said, no, we don't want to have a try meeting. You always have that opportunity to say, we don't want to have a try meeting for that topic. We've always had that opportunity. So I'm a little confused why the try meeting has become the thing that we have to jump over. I don't quite understand that. If you say that, that the Berlin School Committee doesn't want to have a try meeting unless you know what it is that's going to be on the try meeting, okay, which is what we've been doing all along. But if, if what's underneath that is that you're not interested in coming together to work on things before you really understand what it is that the, all of that is going to be, then it'll never happen.
Well, I guess then maybe I'm confused now when you say try meetings. Are we saying every regional meeting is a try meeting or are we saying?
No, we've never said that.
Okay, because that's what I was thinking, is that every meeting going forward and maybe I have.
What I said that I would do for the next meeting would be to come to you with a proposed reconfigured meeting schedule that would include, would absolutely include try meetings. But it would include opportunities for each school committee to have their own meeting as well. So I've never said, from this point forward, we're going to have a hundred percent.
And maybe that was my, my confusion. I'm not saying that it's something.
I agree, I felt like that was it. We're done with regular meetings, try meetings, that's it? Like, that was the, just the feeling that I got from last meeting.
I will say, I'll, I'll absolutely say that the, that.
Not because of what you may have said, but because of what the whole group was saying or the other school committee members. So I was confused about that too.
So I'm not against, I mean, we've had try meetings. I think, I mean, if we, if we're sitting here as a.
Talking about nothing?
Yeah, as a committee and.
So what I'm going to do at the next meeting, next regional union meeting, and I believe I'm going to request that it be a try meeting, although it may be dangerous to do, is to actually suggest a reconfigured school committee meeting schedule. So that there's not as many meetings and that the meetings are more focused on policy and not on building issues.
And that would require, if you're going to talk about that, that would require three meetings, I mean, three posted meetings. Because you can't, like I said before, give your, the six people take a vote and expect that to be for all three school committees.
I understand that.
So that's why.
That's why we had a try meeting at the last meeting. Because I knew that there would be votes and each school committee had to have its own vote.
Right.
So I understand that.
So, so I'm, I'm feeling more positive about this.
Okay.
That we can have try meetings as long as we, you know, we say this one, we're going, we'd like to have a try meeting because this is the agenda and if all committee members agree to having a try meeting, we'll, we'll have a try meeting. Does that, and so I'd like to amend your motion, I guess, because if other people.
You would ask me to amend my motion.
I'm asking you to amend your motion. If you don't want to, you don't have to, I mean, but.
So can you guys write up a purpose for what the meetings are and say the, the, they have these things, try meetings are these, and then the school committee individually tell them those and kind of set. town goes and kind of set-
It'll be the agenda. So the agenda would articulate the topics, whether or not it's-
That's meeting specific, but I'm just saying in general-
Oh, in general, oh.
In general, architect it, so that people can say, "You know what, we're having this meeting, that's going to feed into this, and this is going to feed into that."
Get two more stipulations.
Rather than, you know, "This is what we're going to do this week or this month, whatever the schedule is." It's just kind of say, "These are kind of topics that might be happening these days." And it could be a ton of overlap there, but at least people can kind of see where it all fits, because that's what I think I'm hearing.
That's what I was alluding to in asking, what, do you have a list, or do you have something of what kind of topics would be discussed?
Just clouds, you know, three clouds, and this is what's happening in these areas.
Okay, so that was my thought. I'm feeling more positive it's something that all, if all three members agree, that it can, that it's a tri-meeting.
I think it's always been that way.
Yeah, well, my confusion was, let's just clear-
What's always been what way?
They had to agree to have a tri-meeting.
Well, I think the chair agreed, but I think the committee members need to agree too.
Okay.
That needs to be something that's communicated to the members.
Okay.
The other thing is that I would feel a lot more comfortable if we had the guidance at the region for, with MASC, that, so that they can explain if there's issues with or without it. And if we don't do some positive sort of team building or something with the members that join at the region, then, you know, I don't think anything's going to work.
Okay.
Those would be my two stipulations. Working with MASC and doing some kind of team building so that we can work together.
Okay.
Because it's not really nice to wake up on Saturday morning and read the paper with a blog that's demeaning to the entire Berlin School Committee. I think we need to talk about some of those issues.
Okay, so is there a motion on the table? Are you-
Read back the motion.
There is, but I don't-
Just the original one?
Which, read it again.
Uh, "The Berlin School Committee not take part in tri-meetings until school committee members are more aware of what they involve."
So you're willing to amend, and will amend it to-
I guess I-
Upon an agreement of all members of the Berlin School Committee, or something like to that effect?
I guess I don't know if it's necessary, do we really, we need to do a vote on this? I mean, is it, is it, you feel that we need to take a vote on, because I think, maybe it was my error in not informing you as far as what was going to be a tri, tri-meet-
What would be involved in a tri-meeting? What the subjects would be that are going to be talked about at a tri-meeting? What the discussion was?
Beyond the agenda? Beyond the agenda? Beyond the agenda? I mean, because the agenda is sent out, to say, "This is going to be a tri-meeting," and this is what-
Yeah, like a couple days before the meeting.
Okay.
But, but if she doesn't agree to the tri-meeting and the agenda's sent out, it's sent out and we're ready to, the meeting's-
You can't change the agenda after it's been posted.
Alls I'm saying is, what kind of notification are you looking for besides the agenda? What, what are you looking for?
A phone call that says, "Dr. McDermott is thinking that maybe we'll have a tri-meeting, and this is the subjects that we're going to talk about." And, you know-
Is that okay with you? Do you agree to that?
Or have him call. He, he should probably call, because it's actually looking for feedback.
Okay.
So it doesn't look like an illegal meeting.
Okay, and at what point in time do we, I don't know, how does this work?
About a week or so before, when you do the agenda.
Oh, yeah, okay, but what if you agree, and, or what if Nikki says no and you and I say yes? How does that work?
Beats me, it's new territory, I don't know.
And so we can figure out how to make that work.
All right, we need to-
It's also actually going to be an issue that we'll have to talk about if Nikki's on Berlin and we're on the region, whether we want to do this.
We're kind of spinning our wheels here.
So.
Larry?
There's several points of clarification with their, the, the votes that were, were taken last week, just so everyone is clear on what occurred. There were no single votes, and in each case, all three committees had unanimous votes. So each, each committee was separately represented. There was never a vote of the regional school committee to not regionalize fully at this time. It was talked about in a working session. No vote was ever taken. And point of order, I, what the chair is pretty responsible for setting the agenda. If the chair's interested in feedback from the other members, then absolutely, it's great, makes sense. I'm not aware of a, a, a legal precedent for having a unanimous agreement from all members on any agenda item. It's supposed to be a majority rules on any vote, but the chair has sold his pressure over the, the agenda.
Okay, Ray? Ray?
I have been exposed to school committees for 60 years. And somehow, in spite of all the dysfunction that we're talking about, the students that are being ground out are in pretty good shape. And I believe that over the years, this is due to decisions that have been made from the heart.
Thank you. All right, so we can move on from this topic. Is there a motion on the-
Are you asking me to withdraw my motion?
I'm asking, I would like you to do whatever you feel comfortable doing.
Well, I mean, either whether, whether we take a vote or not, I think it, it says something. I mean-
Okay. What, what, I believe we need to work at this. I think we're beating it to death. I think what needs to come out of this is, we need to request at the regional committee or the tri-meeting that we do some team building and some relationship building from here on in. I really don't think it has a lot to do with our procedures. That is my thought. I don't know if a vote is necessary, but if you would like to take one, I would be open to taking a poll and a vote. So it's up to you guys.
I would take, I will take my motion off the table. However, I think a big part of having tri-meetings is listening to someone who is more of an authority from MASC or wherever, to say, you know, "This is what you're doing by trying to break new ground. This is what, this is what is a possibility, compromising, you know, you have to be very careful, careful by doing such and such, not to compromise the authority of the elementary schools, because they do still have authority over certain things." I would be more comfortable with that. I don't think we were careful this year.
Okay, so we need more education.
We need more education on what that involves. And, and like I say, I think there's a complete huge issue with not being able to voice an opinion at the region unless you agree with everybody else. And when you don't, don't agree with everyone, you shouldn't be treated any differently, you know, by other members or the superintendent. It all still has to work. You should be able to walk away from the table and be friends. And everything is at the table, the discussion. And that's not the way it's working right now.
Okay.
I don't want the Toronto School Committee tri-meetings to act like a K through 12 regional school committee.
Absolutely.
I don't want to see that, that would make me very uncomfortable.
Okay. Thank you for your thought. Are we good?
And I, and I think what he said is actually very important. You have to recognize the setup that you have.
Okay.
Instead of trying to railroad it one way or the other. It is what it is, and we have to acknowledge that. And if we want to change it, that would be a vote of the regional school committee, and maybe some discussion here at the Berlin School Committee. Who, who knows? I mean, it's, it's like we never really talked about sixth grade, you know, at the Berlin School Committee meetings, but maybe we should have, who knows?
We didn't?
Well, I mean, the, the discussion on do we support it or not, we just sort of didn't talk about that.
I believe-
It was no need to really address it, but maybe, you know, discussion.
I thought we did-
We never took a vote on that as a Berlin School Committee.
Really?
We actually asked twice.
Yeah.
And we didn't?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that says something, too.
That's what I'm trying to point out, is we need to be able to address things and not feel like, like we are one, one big core, I was going to say coercive.
Cohesive.
Cohesive, thanks, Ray. Group. You need to be able to feel free to talk about things that, if you're trying to work as one group, you know? Some of the things that we've been discussing that are issues at the region, we should have probably talked about here in Berlin. How do we feel about it?
Okay, I mean, I don't want to belay the subject, but I guess I've always feel, I feel like when I discuss it at the region, it's the same way I feel when I'm in Berlin.
And most of the time, I think you're right. But I think you do, you have to recognize that you have the opportunity to do things differently, and that maybe the-
Definitely.
That you, you shouldn't be trying to railroad around it, because you know one member might have some question to it.
I would hope that none of us would be railroaded into anything. We really shouldn't be.
No, that's why I think this is, this is why this discussion was needed.
Okay, so I guess I, I, I can honestly say, I've never felt railroaded, either place.
I have.
Okay, well, that would be something else we need to work on.
Mm-hmm.
Are we done with this issue, please?
Are you uncomfortable?
Uncomfortable?
Are you uncomfortable?
No, I'm just tired of it. I'm fine with it. Are we good?
So I will withdraw my motion from the table, I mean, with the stipulation that I would hope that we would contact MASC ASAP. We can put this in a communication to Larry, or we could just tell him right now that we would really like to have MASC contacted, and that-
Or we can actually add it on the-
I know.
Yeah.
I would feel most comfortable if it was at the very next meeting, to be perfectly honest, so that this doesn't continue.
That would be great.
And, right, for advice on the, the whole deal of the tri-meetings, and then we need to work on some team building.
I believe there's a ropes course over at Camp Harrington. Anybody came?
Yes, there is. Teamwork has one also.
Better start working out first.
And it, one more thing, Ruth, is just that I think that at some point, we're going to have to discuss, as Berlin School Committee, what we're going to do if Nikki's not going to participate at the region. And that would be probably at the next meeting.
Okay.
Here, at the table.
Okay. How the procedure will be-
And how that would work.
Okay.
If it would at all.
Okay. My lead's got that? Thank you. Thank you for all your input. So we're going to quickly move on to the procedure of releasing executive session minutes.
Yeah, actually, this should be quick. This is more of an update and some information on the process for releasing executive session. I think, since I've been here, we've tried to, at the very beginning of the year, bring forward things that are, have been in executive session or minutes from executive session to determine whether or not it's appropriate for them to be released. And essentially, the, and I think you have in your packet some information on that. Reason to release them is if the issues that related to the reason to keep them, if they are gone, then there's no real appropriate reason to keep them maintained. However, one of the things that we have been doing is actually providing the school committees with the minutes, those executive session minutes, as part of communications via email, so that you had a chance to actually review them. Can't do that anymore, because they become public record and, so we have to figure out a different way for people to understand what the minutes are, be able to review them, think about whether or not it's appropriate for them to be released. So in addition to the, kind of the, some guidelines for how to think about whether or not things should be released, the other thing that you have, and you do have this in your package, you have that.
Yep.
On the second page of that, you'll see a big black arrow pointing. It actually provides some guidelines on how that could happen. For example, the entire public body could review, the chair could review, or the chairs designate could review, but the, so I think, I want you to, I just, I just want you to think about that, I don't want you to decide that now. But I want you to have this, take a look at this, and then we're going to come back to each of the committees and talk about the appropriate way or the way that you've adopted for how you want to review executive session minutes. So this is an FYI, take a look at this, and then we'll come back and talk more about it, okay? You guys just have to be more careful about how we distribute the information. So that was pretty easy? Any questions about that?
So we're supposed to read the, is this, am I got the right document?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we'll have, bring this back on the Berlin Agenda next month.
On all three agendas. Great. I don't know if it'll be next month, we're going to look at all, because we took, we took, we took care of a lot of executive session minutes that were really old. So we're pretty much up to date. We haven't done executive session minutes from last year yet. So we should be in okay shape. If we can see through that, we can do it in the next month, we'll try to do that, but you'll, you'll know if we're going to do it.
So this is a future agenda item?
Yes.
The other, Brian, the other thing that I have heard, thought process I've heard on executive session minutes is that they are not released until someone requests them. Have you heard that before?
There is some language that says that if somebody requests them, then you have to really, you have to be able to provide very solid information and rationale for not releasing them. But as you'll see in the guidelines, if you read through them, they're pretty specific about the reasons why you can hold them. And if none of those apply, then you really have an obligation to release them.
Okay. I mean, I didn't know if this was a change or not a change, or just a different opinion, you know, that I'd heard.
So we are obligated to release them at some point in time?
Yes.
Okay.
If, if the reason to keep them has gone away, then we are obligated to really release them, yeah. We can't just keep them forever.
In the email?
Unless that, unless the reason stays forever.
Okay, and the email has basically brought that to light also, that we can't be doing?
I think some of the updates in the open meeting law has identified that email is now, even where it used to be that it was a collection of school committee members in an email, then that was considered a forum. Now, if I have a communication with any one of you, that's considered public record.
All right.
So some of that has been updated, so that's part of it, okay?
Okay. So we will look forward to another future agenda item. So we will move on to the school improvement plan.
Sure. Come on up. Sure. This is the hot off the press draft, so it is different than the one you have in your books.
Yes, okay.
And I wanted to acknowledge Sandra Pendergast from the school council, who was gracious enough to come tonight. She had other plans, and she rearranged her schedule to be here with me, so thank you, We had presented this the last meeting, and I know that the committee wanted a chance to review it. I did get some questions that, and conversation with Ruth, and some questions from Chris that were sent today. I tried to address those as much as possible. Our school council meeting was this afternoon, so we worked to make some changes and to have discussion. I'm not sure, this is just our most recent draft, I'm not sure if it's ready for your approval tonight, but we did try to, to add the things that were above to our attention.
Can you just kind of go over what they were?
Sure, we can-
I mean, I know what mine are, was there, if there were other things.
We can go page by page and take a look at this. Some of this was just in the framework of the template that was used, and changing the fourth column to read resources and funding needs, instead of just resources that was written last time. We also took a look at the timeframe in some of these. Up at the top, you'll notice it now says September 2010 to June 2012, before it had Um, up at the top, you'll notice it now says September 2010 to June 2012, before it had said just 2010, 2011. But I'm talking with Ruth and Brian last week about this, we decided to be more specific about when this would, this, um, timeline would extend. So we pinpointed these as a time, as a timeframe. On the first, uh, I did add in here that we wanted to do some work with open response and improving open response scores for this year because that was an area of weakness in our MCAS, and I feel that that's an area that the, that the staff is working on, has been working on, and needs to continue to do so. So I had just put that in. In objective 1.3, I know there was a question about how that goal would be accomplished, and I think we do need to do more PD around technology. And we also, um, I think the evidence is also in the fact that we have students actually utilizing technology in the classroom on a regular basis. So we can certainly take, gather information about how that is being, if, and how that's being utilized in the classroom. Another area is to evaluate the current social studies curriculum schoolwide. That's 1.4. We added on, onto that, um, this is in alignment with the Massachusetts frameworks, and um, I know that Sandra did speak up at the meeting and echoed my sentiments and I think our staff sentiments that this is an area that has not been addressed in a number of years. We have textbooks that are falling apart, literally, um, they, um, and we need to look at what is best for our students at this point, whether it's textbooks or other resources through technology that we can, and, and other resources through technology that we can utilize. Um, we certainly need to do something for the fifth grade, they're, they're really-
I think fifth grade, what we discussed, has a good, um, program or curriculum that they're using, but the textbooks are a massive falling apart, and there's pages missing, and, you know, that definitely needs to be addressed. I think one of the other things we discussed is that the, kind of K through three level, or, yeah, K one and two mostly, because we did just get books for the third grade. But K one and two kind of needs more guidelines as far as following the frameworks, and actually needs some sort of program perhaps. Sounds like a lot of the teachers at Newt and Carol could speak of it, actually just kind of have things that they've been doing, and they're just kind of keep using the same things they're using. They don't have like a set program, it doesn't sound like-
Right. So in addition, that's right, so in addition-
In that K one, two level.
To textbooks, we need to look at the curriculum itself.
I mean, they're, what they're doing sounds like great things, but are we following the frameworks? Do we need to give them more, um, you know, materials or whatever so that they can follow the frameworks? I think that's something that we need to do.
Did you want, did you want to include, um, say, for example, in 1.1 and 1.2, you know, eighty percent of the student population, um, you're going to look to that percentage, that's what I was meaning by 1.3 and 1.4. Did you want to put down, I don't know how to make it something tangible, to increase student and staff proficiency by a certain amount, or, um, you know, you know what I'm saying?
You want a number there?
Well, I mean, or some, uh, maybe just a bit more detail, that's what I was looking for when I was making the suggestion. You know what I'm saying? No.
I think eighty, what does eighty percent represent? Is that what you're, and-
Well, I mean, that's something you can actually count, so you can say, yes, I was successful, or no, I wasn't. Um, if you just say you're gonna increase student and staff proficiency in technology, I guess-
So you just want a three, two, three?
Okay, so you want a measurable goal. Something measurable.
Measurable.
Right. I mean, that's how you'll get to say later on, I was successful, or I was not, or I need, still need to work on this, it's not up to, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but you need to, I have a way to measure it, too. I think some of them we discussed before, that it's hard to put a number in there to-
Or, or something measurable, like you-
But some of them are not measurable. You know, it's hard because-
Yeah. Well, that's on saying, if you change the wording a little bit, maybe then it would be measurable?
I think some of this, well, if I go to 1.3, I think it looks, I, 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 they have some things like purchasing the rest of the smart boards. I mean, I think that's a good goal and-
Right. How you will know that you have accomplished this is that the smart boards were purchased, is a part of it.
And I think some of this, we're not gonna be able to see it, but I think Carol or whoever's evaluating the teachers, we know. Right. So it would be all, all staff is trained in smart boards, is that what you're thinking more, that by, by the year 2012, all, all staff has been trained?
Well, I'm just thinking of SMART goals, S-M-A-R-T, like we talked about before, right, Larry? S-M-A-R-T, SMART goals?
Specific measurable.
I mean, my husband talks about SMART goals, too. Must be an engineering thing.
We talked about it.
S stands for, I mean, I can't remember now, S-M-A-R-T.
Measurable, attainable.
Specific, measurable, time-bound, realistic. Yeah.
But anyway, then you will, if you can sort of follow those rules, then you know that, you know, you, you can accomplish or not accomplish. Just the language, I guess, is what I was looking for to say. I mean, maybe you don't say something so broad, maybe you say something a little bit more specific.
So can I, um, sorry. Um, I think, given how far the folks have come, have developed this plan from last year, um, and I think the work that's been done in it, I think, does a really good job of articulating the things that are being focused on.
Mm-hmm.
And while there's, there's acknowledgement that there are some, um, some additional things that could be provided in the plan, um, I think it's, um, a little much to ask to provide the feedback right now, given that we've been kind of-
No, I'm, I really wasn't.
Sitting on the document for a while. So I guess what I would suggest is that we take those suggestions, and we look at being able to incorporate those into the next round of the next plan. Um, but if you're okay with what's here-
Oh, I am, I'm okay with the, the school improvement goals, um, for September 2010 to June 2012. Um, I just was trying to make the point.
Yep.
Well, I wanted to think, Carol brought up, and I don't know if I mentioned it through, was changing the setup of this, someone had given an example of something else, and I, maybe that's-
Right.
You know, if we can look at that, maybe looking at other ways, other schools set them up will help us as well.
Yeah.
Many of us are in the committee here, are new. So, you know, we're running against the budget.
Yeah. I, I mean, excellent goals.
And I agree with you, we do need to have measurable goals.
Right.
Um, there's so much more to getting there as a professional learning community, and when you speak of SMART goals, that is part of the professional learning community philosophy that education has embraced. We're, we're moving toward that, but we're not yet there.
Right.
We're getting there. Once we reach that level, then we'll be able, I think, to articulate better to you measurable goals, um, in some instances. We try to do that with what we can, but right now, things like technology, where we're really all over the place, um, in the experience of that, what's available to us, professional opportunities that people take outside the district, is very scattered and, and hard to measure, um, at this point, in, in the way you're describing it. But, but eventually, yeah, it would be great to move in that direction, certainly, and have that available for you, you're just not, not there yet, so looking on it.
Okay. To that point a little bit, one of the things I think someone had asked about was the global awareness.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the things, it's not in here, but we talked about, is just kind of given that the teachers are doing things like that-
Mm-hmm.
-in the classroom, it's just part of their regimen, it's part of what they're doing. So we didn't put it in there because it's just something ongoing and what they're doing.
Right.
So it's not something we felt we need to change. You know, the global part of it, the global awareness for our system, is definitely something we talk about a lot. I mean, I think you guys probably remember, because your kids were part of the school, and they used to do the week-long cultural week.
Mm-hmm.
And we've kind of gotten away from that. We had some discussion tonight about why we have gotten away from that, and I think MCAS came up as the reason. It's hard to take a whole week of time just to focus on something different outside of the frameworks, so it's, you know, as nice as that cultural week was, and as great as you, you know, there's a better way we can make it work in the, you know, curriculum, that would be great, but I'm not sure that, the way things are set up right now, that's the framework that we can-
And even social studies, which really has taken a backseat to math and English language arts, because it's been, MCAS has been the focus of math and English language arts, and subject areas like social studies and science, and a whole variety of others, unfortunately. So I'm actually pleased to see social studies as a focus in there. And remember, this is a school improvement plan, so the things that you're doing really well that are ongoing don't necessarily have to be articulated if they're not being changed. But the things that you've got in here are things that you're, you're changing and, um, and looking forward to improvement, so, which is good.
I think they're very impressive goals.
And then the only other thing I had asked Carol in my email was, could you include us as one of the people that you're gonna improve communication with? Not that it's bad, but just so that, to, you know, put us on the list of people you're gonna let know? You know what I mean?
I, it made me want to question if you did get newsletters and invitations to events. Are you on, on the newsletter pieces, or?
Um, we, we get the weekly one, I think.
We get the weekly one every week.
Is that, I don't know what else you send out, but that's, the weekly one we do get.
Right, that, that's pretty much, and then the invitations to events that we have, try to-
Do you guys get, uh, teachers, I mean, like, a lot of the teachers post them on, like, each teacher now sends home a newsletter?
Yes, every teacher sends a newsletter.
Been really bad about going on the website, so-
You want all of that, I mean, you're, all those teachers, do you guys really want all of them?
No, no, no.
I read all of them, but-
No, no, not necessarily, but-
I mean, all the specialists do them, and you have to break them, send them out, but art teachers do it without, the literacy specialists.
That's the minutia of it.
I mean, I don't think you guys want all of that, but-
It's nice when, I mean, it's nice, it is nice to know, I, I read the board, you know, as I drive by. Um, but, you know, when you don't have kids in there, you know, you're not connected, or as connected to the school, so maybe-
A lot of the teachers do have them on the website if you want to look, if you don't want to get inundated and have to look.
I know. And that's my fault, I've been bad about that.
Right, they do, exactly. And we're, and, and some of our teachers' goals this year are to do more with their websites, so that would be available.
Right.
I, I wanted to add one last piece, and I know we were going step by step through this, I don't know if you wanted to continue to do that, but I did, because Sandra mentioned the global awareness piece, and I really feel that, um, and this again was part of a conversation we had had about, about the plan, as, as, you know, Ruth had talked with me about that particular piece, that as the educational leader, I really feel that we need to move beyond those single events with, um, these, the global awareness, that, I mean, while they're important and they bring cultures together and they teach respect for cultures, and we certainly get more diversity as time is going on, um, in, in our school, and, um, the children will have that experience, but we really need to take a look at engaging children daily in, in global issues, and, um, I, I was telling Brian, I went to a phenomenal conference on Friday with Heidi Hayes Jacobs, who is, uh, one of the gurus of education, and there are amazing things happening in schools, um, with children and technology, and, um, bringing the world closer to us, through Skyping opportunities, actually having conversations with children in other schools and other parts of the world, and experiences that are out there, and, um, when I think of global awareness for our children, I, I'm not, my vision is not only this Heritage Day and these kinds of events, and they're important, they're nice to have, but I think that's, as Sandra described them, is nice, but we really need to look at what's essential for our children and their future. So that's, that's the eyes that I'm looking at this through.
That's great.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other comments?
You want a motion to approve?
I would drop one.
I make a motion to approve the school improvement plan.
Uh, second half.
Um, David?
I-
And I'd like to, um, Sandra, if you could pass on to the school council, thank you so much for all the hard work that you've done, and, um, it looks great, and thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
It's good. Moving forward. Okay. We have a discussion in the BMS facility tour that occurred on October 19th, 2020.
Is that for me?
I don't know, I think so. I remember being there.
I remember being there, too.
It was a meeting.
Right.
Was this, maybe the discussion was for sending a date, but we already did that.
I want to say that we talked possibly of forming a subcommittee.
Oh, that's right.
Facility Subcommittee.
Facility Subcommittee, so-
We did?
Well, yeah, I think we did.
We did? Was I there?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't remember.
I remember saying- Standing outside and saying, getting parents and people-
We had a community, community member that was on the building committee that approached us regarding the, outside of the building, and I believe I said it to him, um, we were all standing outside, and it was probably windy, maybe, that's what happened. But I believe that it would be really, um, good if there's any community members out there, that would like to be part of a facility subcommittee, that would like to take on the responsibility of reporting to the school committee the, um, condition of the building. Craig Gibo was on the, uh, building committee, so Craig, if you're out there, want to be on a subcommittee? Um, but it is an asset of the town, um, so that we're hoping that we can, um, I know some of the suggestions were power washing and pretty overwhelming when it comes to a budget. Um, so I don't know if there's a subcommittee out there that would be interested in, um, keeping their eye on the building and reporting to the school committee and the administration, um, regarding the upkeep and, um, just helping us keep on top of it. Um, it's an asset of the town, and it's, what, ten, twelve, what are we at?
Ten, eleven, I guess now.
Eleven years old, and it's starting to show its, um, age a little bit, and if we don't nip it in the bud now, we're gonna have, um, bigger financial problems on our hands. Um, so-
Um, yeah, I think the, and I, and I do think that's a good idea. I think the other thing is this, this community member, which, um, he had spent a lot of time looking around the building and identifying things that he thought we needed to pay attention to. Um, some of those were things that should be fixed, some of those were just maintenance, uh, things that were, um, kind of ongoing things to pay attention to, but also, some things are, they happen once every ten years, whatever it is, like the caulking in the windows, and if, even though they may be big-ticket items once in a while, they're well worth it because the asset, the building really lasts a long time. Um, but, uh, the real strength in the facilities committee is that it's not, it's a group of people that are paying attention, uh, more often, as opposed to a person that, because I think he came, it may have been a year or so, or whatever, eight months, eight months to a year, and a lot of the things that he had on his list had already been taken care of. So, so instead of having somebody, you know, be worried about the building and then come and then, you know, eventually we get a report, the school community's walking around the building, um, if somebody was paying attention to it regularly, then we could get ahead of those. Uh, so in terms of a facilities committee, that makes a lot of sense. Um, I will say that now that we've got a cust, a head custodian that's, that's kind of looking across both buildings and paying attention, that we're actually taking care of a lot of things that haven't been taken care of in a long time. Um, and so I would, I would also ask that that person be involved in the facilities subcommittee, if that gets great as well.
That would be great, right. Communication.
I, I did want to add to that, that I did speak to the head custodian about that list. We went over each of the items that he identified, so he was going to contact Mr. Gibo and also get some price quotes for some of the things that needed to be taken care of from the lowest of the priority.
Right. Right.
Small things like cages over lights or light bulbs or things like that, up until the big-ticket items like the power washing of the school or sealing some of the cracks that were in the building. So he was looking into that, so...
Is this something that you would want to bring forth as a capital planning items, too? I mean, when, once you get ideas of the cost and, you know, put together a list for, I think it's February when we have to have our articles in for capital items that would, actually, it's December something, I think, for a list to the capital planning committee or the financial advisory committee. So if those, if those, I didn't see the list, the final list, so, but, you know, if there are things that are felt to be most important or more important, then they should probably go on that list of capital items to at least be considered by the Berlin School Committee.
Carol, I have that list, and maybe we can obviously communicate it with Dr. Durand, let us know if there's, that's what I was going to say. I guess the question I'm asking, though, is are you okay with forming a facility subcommittee?
If you can get any volunteers.
Well, it's, it's, it is the town's asset and we need to, you know, we are responsible for taking care of it.
Yeah, we are responsible for that, yeah.
Correct, so hopefully we can find somebody...
Maybe it's something that just, maybe meeting twice a year or something like that.
Right, doing a walkthrough kind of thing.
You know.
So if there is anybody out there that has interest in serving on a subcommittee, who shall they contact?
Contact us, contact me.
Contact, use the website to find Dr. Durand's email, if you guys have any interest in serving on it. I would imagine they would report to us, correct?
Yes.
Sorry?
They would report to us?
Yes.
Or would they report to you guys?
No, it's a, it's a school community subcommittee.
Okay, great. Okay. Sandra?
I'm hoping you could find somebody without, I think Carol was putting her newsletter on Friday, or you could put on the websites, you know, charge of websites.
That'd be great.
Good idea.
Cable television.
Yep. Thank you. Are we all done with that? Okay. Finance report, budget process, meeting to Berlin, FinCom, I believe this is on here, so that we can begin to find a date to approach the finance committee.
Scott Schultz sent an email that you all received, and we've talked about it a number of times, making sure that we get together early in the budgeting process so we can begin to share either combination of whether it's challenges or things that we know might happen or potentials, just so we just get our heads around what the budget might look like. And so, you know, in the past, we've kind of formally committed to trying to set a meeting, you know, early December at some point, and he had sent an email that included two dates. One was the first and one was the fifteenth, so...
Of December?
Of December, yep. So I thought I would bring that forward and if we could identify, not all of you have to be there, but certainly all are welcome. I know we moved, the first was the original school community meeting, which we actually moved, so, but...
Yes, I'm going to be away till the eighth, so...
The fifteenth is, that would be a Boyleston School Committee, so I would not be able to be there for that. So I don't know if there's a different time that we could do it, or two of the three could go on the first, it's really kind of up to you.
Right. I mean, if you want to proceed, I'm comfortable with both of you.
For which, for what?
December first.
And that's a Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday.
We change our meeting to the thirteenth.
Right. So we won't have a Berlin School Committee meeting, but we'll meet with the finance committee?
Correct.
Remind me why we changed it?
Because Nikki couldn't be there.
I couldn't be there, I'm away.
Oh, yeah, okay, I forgot. Yeah, that's fine, I don't mind. If you want to do it December first, it would be, because they, yeah, they have, they meet Wednesday nights.
All right, so we'll work that, make sure that that's still okay, and then we'll try to get back to everybody.
Yeah, if we could just, somebody send me an email, one of you two, just like a quick summary of what went on, what happened, and where we're at, that would be great.
Okay, sounds good.
Is that all on that?
Yep, that's all, yep. We didn't really have any update from the last time we presented the reports. We're still planning on coming back with some information, you know, as soon as we get, whatever we get from the state. We're, I guess, not surprisingly, not hearing a peep out of the state regarding next year's budget, so...
Till next year tomorrow.
Unfortunately, this time, no news is probably not good news.
Right.
We'll find out. That's, that's it for that.
Okay, so do we have a principals report from Carol?
Sure, just to fill you on some of the upcoming events for the month ahead, we do have conferences, parent-teacher conferences in the next two days, so there's no school for the children. But we do have professional development tomorrow afternoon for the, for the staff, including paraprofessionals. Veterans Day, our annual ceremony is at 1:30 on November ninth, so you're all welcome to come. And we have our student council up and running now, and also we have our second grade, the annual Thanksgiving play is nine fifteen on, I'm sorry, 10 o'clock on Thursday, November 18th.
What time did you say that was?
It's actually at ten, nine, ten, I have that. Let me double check it, hold on. I think it's, I'm sorry, 9:15. Yeah, it is. It changed, 9:15.
All set?
All set.
Thank you, Carol. Do we have a superintendent's report?
Nope, I don't actually have anything, Stephen.
Okay. Any other reports? No. Comments, questions from the public regarding items that aren't on the agenda? Heidi?
I just want to thank Carol. Every year, the PTO, it's a hunter, does wish lists for the teachers, and we've got a lot of requests this year for very elementary Spanish, because there are more seventh graders who are taking introductory Spanish this year than we've ever had before. And we had over a couple thousand dollars' worth of requests just for Spanish, and through the great fund, we found out that BES and BMS might have some old Spanish materials from when they taught in the elementary schools. And Carol has been kind enough to let some of the Tohantou teachers borrow the material because it's not being used right now, it's just sitting in storage. And I just, it, I, I think, although we are three separate districts, I think it, it's, it's wonderful that we can share between the schools, and I would just like to encourage the elementary school principals to do the same thing. I'm sure there are times when you've got a very advanced student at the elementary school level, and I would encourage you to pass on to your teachers and try to encourage them to contact colleagues at Tohantou who might be able to help with curriculum at the lower level. I mean, you spend a lot of time on differential instruction, but I don't know how often an elementary school teacher will think of a Tohantou teacher as a colleague and try to pull information down or vice versa, so thank you for the material for Spanish. And I don't know if you've located it or...
Lynn is, we've looked, we're looking all over, and Lynn is looking, too. She's coming in tomorrow, actually, to spend time doing her, so...
Because that, that'll be a huge, huge help to you all, Lynn, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, do we have any comments or questions from the school committee?
Yes. I would just like to, first off, say we had a, I had a wonderful time at the reading day and reading with the children. It was just so great and getting back there and seeing the younger ones. And I went to, actually, Mrs. Donahoe's class, and I've got this wonderful thank you note and all these cards from the kids, and they drew us reading together and their favorite parts of the book, and so it was just really nice to get these, and I thank you for the opportunity to go in and read and have a wonderful day. I thought it was really great that she sent these out. Fun to look at.
Nikki, I want to acknowledge Pat Anderson for coordinating that every year. Pat is our librarian, and she does a terrific job getting everybody on board and picking the books and just making a special, I think, for everybody, the students and all the folks who come. She puts on a lovely reception for everybody and is always very gracious, so thanks to Pat.
Thanks, Pat, it's a lot of fun.
It was, thank you. I, I just wanted to know whether you want me to, or someone to advertise somewhere that we're going to be looking for someone for the region, to be appointed to the region, like cable television or...
Sure, we could do that, cable television. Any other thoughts?
You tell me.
Here's the TV.
Looking for someone for the regional committee.
I was going to suggest, I did, I did ask Peg on the way in that if, you know, anybody was interested, maybe send a letter and send it to here, or, I mean, yeah, here or the elementary school or central office.
Or contact us by email.
Right.
From the website.
Yeah, but, yeah.
I don't think you're looking for someone for the regional committee, I think you're looking for someone for your elementary school committee that you appointed, aren't you?
She didn't resign from the Berlin Committee.
Oh, you're still going to be, oh, okay, I misunderstood. Stayed for a minute.
So if anybody's interested, I think that you can probably get ahold of any one of the three of us and ask more information or just contact us.
There you go. And I guess I would like to take the opportunity to make a public apology to the administration. At our, at our regional meeting, I said something that I slightly misspoke, saying that my job wasn't to make your job easier, and really what I wanted to say is, my charge as a school committee member is to have students in mind, so I do want to apologize, that's not, I, I didn't say it quite right, it kind of came out without a whole lot of thought, but I just want to tell you guys how much I do appreciate you being here and all the work that you do. It is not a fun task, I'm sure, to spend your evenings here, but you guys put a lot of long and hard hours into it, and I just want you to know that it is appreciated, and I apologize. So, moving on from there, we need to review the action items for the next, and next, we need to review the topics. Action items? Do you have any action items?
Next meeting?
You'll go to them, yep, next meeting topic.
Just the discussion on how the regional school committee will work with Nikki staying up for our own school committee.
So we won't have another meeting then before we meet with the FinCom, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Sure, if you have any materials for us to be prepared for that meeting to review for them, that would be great, okay?
And I will run off this paper that I got from a meeting that the FinCom had with the Berlin Select, and give you a copy.
Okay, that's a great...
This is the, probably the, the bad news about...
The finances?
Yeah.
Do you have something, Carol?